All right, everyone. It is 4:05 PM on Thursday, January 7th, 2021. And I'm going to welcome you all to a work session that's around the subject of policy governance, collaboration, the board and the chancellor. This is a board development workshop, work session, and it is also part of the onboarding for our new board members. It was our sense that it would be important for our onboarding process to be as robust as possible and also provide new opportunities and reinforce learning for current board members. The topic of collaboration is certainly a critical one for us, understanding roles and responsibilities as board members, particularly in relationship to our CEO or, in this sense, our chancellor. And also the fact that our, our system at Board Leadership runs on a policy governance model. And it's not just about having policies and following them. There are some real contact, there is real context around the discussion of policy governance. It was brought to our attention that Dr. Daniel Phelan is quite a leader in policy governance and also has done extensive work in leadership design around the idea of the board and chancellor collaboration model, as well as discerning roles and responsibilities. So it was an ideal opportunity for us to engage him to this through this board development and board onboarding session. Before we move on, for the record, I am going to take role of which board members are in attendance. So with that, I'm going to go through the usual process and ask Ms. Bittersmith, are you present?
I am.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you, Dr. Muni.
I'm here.
Ms. Smith?
Present.
Great. Dr. Thor, are you with us now?
I am finally here, thank you.
You're welcome. Glad to have you join us. Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Then Ms. Munoz, our student trustee. Are you present today? I believe you were, are.
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect, great. So we have a full attendance of all seven board members plus Ms. Munoz and Dr. Gonzalez, are you and your staff are present? With that, then, I am going to invite you, Dr. Gonzalez, to tell us a little bit more about Dr. Phelan and then we'll come back to me to talk a little bit about our process today and move straight into the session. So, Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, President Sullivan, members of the governing board, members of CEC, and guests that are with us this late afternoon. Please allow me to welcome Dr. Dan Phelan. He currently serves as a president and CEO of Jackson College located in Jackson, Michigan, and he has roughly 24 years of experience serving as a president at various institutions. He has the experience of serving in both traditional and policy governance boards, and he's considered by many, he's considered an expert by many on the topic of higher education administration and board governance, where he writes and consults regularly across the country. I had an opportunity to first meet Dr. Phelan when I was elected to the American Association of Community College Board of Directors in 2016, when he was serving as the chair of that board. And our paths have crossed many times since. And I have found him to be a tremendously wise leader, and he is respected by many for his style and work as a leader. And I believe that some of you may have even had an opportunity to work closely with Dr. Phelan, perhaps even see some of his work. Either way, I'd like to welcome him, and we're happy to have him here to share his knowledge, expertise, and wisdom and experience on policy governance, collaboration, the board, and the chancellor. Thank you, and I welcome Dr. Phelan.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And, Dr. Phelan, we're excited to have you with us today. I believe what we discussed is that you will begin the presentation, and when there are appropriate moments, we will stop for some inquiry though limited so that we can get the benefit of the entire presentation today. So with that, take it away, and again, welcome, and thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you, Madam President, and it is indeed a pleasure to be here with you. I also want to thank Dr. Gonzalez for the, for the kind introduction. A good colleague, and you're very fortunate to have a hip expertise and leadership at the Maricopa County Community College District. I want to begin today in the comments, but just asking you to take just 60 seconds, 60 seconds to pause and be present. You know, there's so much that's going on in our world right now, and we're easily distracted from COVID to incidences in Washington, to economic issues, to climate issues, to personal issues. And I think personal self-care is important, and as we come together and with an intent to engage in learning, and we think about governance, we think about collaboration, we think about ways we can support one another and collaborate with our chancellor, it's important that we come open-minded, that we're open to these ideas. And my congratulations to the two newly-elected trustees. This is a really exciting time in higher education, and more particularly, community colleges. And so just being present here in this moment and being open to these ideas, and as President Sullivan had indicated, I'll be pausing now and again and just checking with you before I move on. I also want to say, before moving on here, that this PowerPoint will be made available to you. And it's got more material on it. It defies everything that my, my teacher told me many years ago, and let's just have seven words on a single slide. This one qualifies, but after that, not so much. And primarily because I wanted to have information for you that the board can reflect on with the chancellor and consider further. So I appreciate you taking just a moment with me to just pause and kind of center ourselves this afternoon. So a little shameless promotion about me. I think Dr. Gonzalez had already covered that, and again, it is my pleasure to be with you here today. To give you a little context about where I'm coming from, and my, my present lived experience as a Jackson College, where I'm ending up about 20 years of service, we are a policy governance board, though when I came here in 2001, policy governance was something that was, I guess I would call it, policy governance light. It wasn't fully evolved, but there were some markers of it that you could recognize. A little more about Jackson College, we serve about 7,000 credit students in tri-county area in the south central region of Michigan. We're accredited by the same Higher Learning Commission as you are, and we are also a board college, just like Maricopa with the League for Innovation, the community college. Like you, we have seven members. We do not have a student member. We have board meetings that last two hours by board policy. We have two planning sessions, one in the spring and one in the fall. And in the summer, we have a retreat. This retreat is solely for the purpose of the board and the president, me, to get together with them. And we just talk about collaboration. We talk about how things are working. We talk about the efficacy of our board meetings. We talk about policy governance. We talk about truth and pursuit of knowledge. We talk about the work that we do. These are also very frank and honest conversations with one another, again, trying to figure out how we can work better together, how we can better serve, how we can better provide love, care, and service to those each other and to our students and to our community. We only have two committees overall. These are standing committees, our audit committee and community linkage. Community linkage, of course, is one of the four quadrants of policy governance, and audit is a priority of our board. We have no pre-board meetings, and we try to move around throughout the district. Finally, about our board. We sent out information to our board five days minimally in advance. So we use diligent board books as a digital tool to allow all of our trustees to be able to access information at any time that they want. There's also an archiving section so they can go back and look at past minutes and agendas, and there's a lot of support materials in there as well, orientation materials. I also want to point out an important image in this picture, and that is the image of the president and the chairman of the board sitting side by side. This is a visual way to signal the collaboration between the president and the chairman, but also from a practical point of view, insofar as that this is a meeting of the board, the president of the college is there to be able to help with any questions that occur during the course of the meeting, respond to questions, and also acknowledge any particular undulations or changes that need to happen on the fly. I think that this is a very important signal to members of the public, the media, as to the relationship between the board president and, which we call chairman, and the president of the institution. The last component here is also about the fact that we use Robert's Rules of Order for small assemblies. You may not be aware of that, but Robert's Rules of Order have two categories. Small assemblies actually works for boards of up to 15. It actually is a very efficient methodology. I found it to be able to reduce the amount of time we spend processing through a board meeting. There are a number of things that often appear on board agendas, and we behave in activities and engage in what we believe are necessary procedural functions, but they're really not. Policy governance aside, Robert's Rules of Order, whether small assemblies or the traditional methodology, say that you don't have to have a second, for example. When you receive the minutes for the last board meeting, you don't have to have a motion and a second. You can imagine, for example, what would happen if, if the board did not accept the minutes? Does that mean it didn't happen? Probably not. And so really, this time is really set aside to consider the minutes, if there are any changes to adopt those changes, and then enter it into the record. It does not require that we have a movement and a second by board members. The chairperson of the board, or in your case, the president of the board, can simply acknowledge any changes, adopt those, and move it into the record. There are other kinds of efficiencies that are gained through Robert's Rules of Order, which are not largely understood across boards of trustees, and the small assemblies option for Robert's Rules is also helpful. I'd like you to pause just for a second and ask yourself this question. Why do you do what you do? Why do you do what you do? Whether you as a trustee, you as a member of a board, a body politic, or you Maricopa, why do you do what you do? This gentleman really inspired me a number of years ago. His name's Simon Sinek. If you've not heard of him, I would recommend this book to your reading. Also, you can go on YouTube and find about a 20-minute video, which will give you kind of a summary of what this book is about. Just type in Simon Sinek and start with why, and it will come out, very inspirational video. Simon Sinek says this, "Most organizations have it wrong." He came to this conclusion by the fact that he noticed that some institutions were just more influential. They were able to do better. They seemed to have a better culture, better loyalty. They were able to attract and retain customers longer. And so he studied this very intently and came to this conclusion, and he calls it the golden circle. The golden circle says essentially, why is it the center of what we do, the word "why"? And he says that if you can't explain why you do what you do, then how do you expect anybody else to be able to understand why you exist? Most organizations, and we were there as well, most organizations focus on communicating the what of they do or how they do it. We provide higher education for students. We, we help students graduate. We have quality faculty who provide this education. We've got the best technology on the planet. Fill that, and these are points of what and how. And his point is, the "why" is what has to drive your institution. It's what brings people to you. It's what helps retain students in this case. The "how" should be discussion of how you achieve the achievement of "why", and the "what" is the proof of your belief. Perhaps, again, the question to you, why do you do what you do? Again, as a trustee, as a board, as a college, why do you do what you do? So when I, when I look at the golden circle a little bit closer, most organizations, as I point out, move from the outside in, what we do, how we do it. And many actually ignore the "why" of it. The most salient point that Sinek makes is that people don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. This is more than mission. This is more than values, statements. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it, and being clear about that as an organization. I put this up just primarily to prompt your additional thinking. On your webpage, this is your mission, as it's printed now. You last updated it about 16 years ago. This is what you say that you are doing. Clearly, this is a mission statement, but it's not a statement of "why". You will know when you have a statement of "why", when it includes the words "we believe", "I believe". So as a trustee, "I believe this". We, as a board, "we believe", it gets to the "why" of your, of yourself as a trustee, as a board member, as a member of the college community. So I'd offer that up for you to, to think about as you try to set the context of your purpose, the "why" of your organization, why you come in to do the work, why did you choose to run as a board member? Why should anybody care? What is the contribute, why, why are you there contributing to the organization? What is the legacy that you hope to have as an intention of the "why" of your commitment to the institution? So using that as a context, I want to give kind of a high-level overview of the current ecosystem that we find ourselves in. And it really begs the question, why are we having this conversation? Why did your chancellor reach out to me? Why did your board president reach out to me? This is the way that I'm seeing and understanding the world, and I've come to the conclusion that the tools that brought us here for this moment are insufficient long-term to be able to help us address these current realities. And there are so many of them that are contributing. I've highlighted a number of them here for you to, to consider. But there's really fundamental questions about the value proposition of higher education in community colleges, increased levels of expectation. And when COVID hit, and all of us, Maricopa, Jackson College, and so many of us across the country, when we all went virtual, we put everything up there, operations, and we put classes up there online in the cloud, we, we created a different dynamic for higher education. At that moment, at that precise moment that that happened in March, higher education became fungible, meaning that it was commoditized, it can be swapped out. So if I'm a student, I'm asking myself a question, is, is there value for what I'm paying for? Do I believe that that is an important value for the dollars invested? It's fungible insofar as that, as a student, I can become a real good shopper. I want to take this English class from this professor who happens to, to teach for a community college down in Pima. I want to take this class in mathematics from the University of Idaho, and you see how it goes. We've created a level of fungibility, and so unless we address the value proposition of what we do, unless we create a niche about what we do, we are just one of a large, of a large competition, a large universe of providers. That's just one deeper example. The, the way that we're approaching change, the cycle time in which things are happening are much quicker than they've ever been before. Add to, add to this cornucopia, if you will, of changes in our present reality, we also have some bad acting taking places, taking place across the countryside. Instances in these particular cases, I just went out and randomly pulled articles from across the country about where, when we are not working together, where we're not collaborating, where we're not clear about our governance systems, when we're not clear about our "why", the, the results are troubling, to be sure. And the presidents, so the chancellors, the chief executive officers are not, not excused either. If the chancellor, if the chief executive is not clear about their "why" as well, they get into difficulty as well. There begins to be distrust. There, there tends to be the opportunity for the chancellor or the president to get downrange from the board, and then the deals are worked out in public, and there's loss of morale around the whole of institutions, and it's hard to build that public trust back. It's hard to, it's hard to recover from that. Also related to the executive is the fact that there's significant turnover. Trying to find, excuse me, trying to find a, a chief executive who has been in the chair before is becoming increasingly difficult. Many colleges and universities are looking for CEOs who've had experience. They don't want them to cut their teeth on their institution because they've invested so much in it. And here's the reality, according to the American Association of Community Colleges, about the changes that are, are ahead of us. Add to this that the board and the executive, and virtually the whole of the institution has to deal with this thing. It's called VUCA. VUCA is a term that comes from the military originally, talks about volatile, uncertain, complex, and ambiguous. This is the environment that we're in now. The rules have changed. The playbook has changed. In fact, if this were a football game, we'd probably see every player out on the field wearing a different color uniform. There might not be goalposts. There might not even be a football. There might not even be audiences. How do you score points? How do you, how do you determine how we're going to achieve our objectives? How do I deal with more uncertainty with new rules and new ideas being shot in from the sidelines? Being able to be adaptable with incomplete information and moving targets with increasing competition, this is our charge. How we lead as a board of trustees, how we lead as a chancellor, how we lead as an organization, how do we not only survive, but now how do we thrive as a community college in a VUCA environment? So this is the context for where I think we are in higher education, and more particularly, community colleges. So as President Sullivan had indicated, I wanted to offer both some practical governance guidelines, things that, that I have found through my research, through the work for a book that I put together. Just, I'm very interested in this topic. I've studied, I've been trained in it. And I want to share some, some general practical guidance with regard to governance, and then we'll move into policy governance. And when we get through the segment, I'll pause and, and see if there are questions you have. Here's a father of business and management that we've known, he's long since passed from California. He said, "A good system enables an ordinary people to produce extraordinary results. We're all thoughtful men and women coming together, hopefully sharing a common "why", hoping to do good. This is the belief that we have. If, if we don't have a common understanding of our "why", a common approach, a common system, a common, a common governance methodology, then we're, we're not able to get out of the starting blocks and be effective. We're tackling each other in the process. So a system is more than just governance. It's also about how we conduct ourselves as individuals, how we, how we conduct ourselves collectively. How do we interface and collaborate with the chief executive to achieve desired results? So in that regard, this is the way that I have interpreted governing over, over the years. It's really a group of folks who are either elected or appointed by whatever appointing authority that's out there that are very clear in defining their priorities and outcomes, and they do that through adopting policy. If the board is not clear about its governance type, if they're not clear about policy and be, being high in fidelity to those policies, confusion will be only added to the VUCA environment that exists externally already. So that clear direction comes from the board about, this is what we believe the owners of the institution are requiring of us, the people that we serve. These are the expectations. We're codifying them through policy. This is clearly understood by the chief executive, in this case, the chancellor. And each of these policies are clearly in the public interest. The way we know that is because as trustees, you've asked them. Not by the people only who are complaining, but you're routinely going out and talking to the public. This is, this is the first and highest purpose of the board, to represent the people who put them there. And of course, there's, there's an accountability component which relates to both accountability of the board for its work and accountability of the executive. Chait, Ryan, and Taylor expressed it this way in their research, which I found in my readings with Chait and that all. They, they describe it really as about the collaboration and engagement of the board in concert with the chief executive or the CEO. And there are a number of ways that this presents itself, and they put this down in quadrants. So if you have very low board engagement, very low president engagements, excuse me, chancellor engagements, then, you know, governance happens, operations are happening by attendance, people are unengaged, they're going through the motions. Moving up along the Y-axis a bit, if you look at governance by observation, there you've got a CEO that, in this case, it would be Chancellor Gonzalez, really engaged, really understand what has to happen, really dialed into state and federal and, and local issues, working well with faculty and staff, really engaged, but the board is less so. They're, they're more hands-off. And I can tell you, as a chief executive, that's not a favorable position to be in. We want to do this work collaboratively. We need the board. Moving along the Y-axis, if you have low CEO engagement, a chancellor who is really hands-off, but a board that is really in there. And sometimes this happens because the board is all in, and there's no room for the chief executive. In those particular cases, the board makes it clear that they're really running the show, and they are engaged in the micromanagement of the institution. The board's work should barely be retained to the, the governance of the institution, not the operations of the institution. That is the work of your chief executive. That's the work of Chancellor Gonzalez. But many boards that I've come across are into the detail. They are into the weeds, and it is confusing. It, it creates confusing messages to the organization, and it's really difficult to evaluate the chief executive because the, the board's in the middle of it. Ideally, according to Chait and company, is that governance is leadership is the idea of where we need to be, where you have full in engagement by the board, full in engagement by, by the CEO. And this is a partnership built on trust and collaboration and commitment to a greater purpose, a purpose greater to themselves. One of the central tenets, in my view, of this governance as leadership is this. This is coming from a book by David Horstager. It's called The Trust Edge, another great book that I would recommend to you. Here, he says that these eight pillars are necessary for there to be good working operations, whether this is between a board and a chancellor, a board and the organization, a board and the community, the president and the, and the presidents of the different campuses. It's just essential trust for any organization. It can even be as small as a relationship, a marriage, a family. These are the components that they have advocated that are absolutely essential. After working with thousands of companies, profit, nonprofit organizations, national and international, they found, David Horstager found that these are important elements. So being real clear about the work that you're doing, that you are consistent in the work that you're doing, that your behavior is not inconsistent. So you're the same person in your actions and your philosophy and your beliefs as you were yesterday, that we're committed to the work and that we're, that we're connected to one another. He expresses it in a graphic that looks like this. When you have those eight pillars fully in play, and, and this is not a point where you arrive and you're done. This is a place where you continue to have to work, and especially as there's turnover with the board or a change in leadership with the chancellor's office. But as trust increases, you get better morale, you get better productivity, greater recognition in the community, greater service to the public, those that you're intending to serve. Also, you see reductions in costs and confusion and skepticism and stress within the, the board itself, the administration and organizations. Beyond this, let me dial into some particular governance responsibilities and roles, and I'd like to present them this way. From my perspective, based on the research that's out there and not direct observation, as well as looking at hundreds of hours of video of various board meetings nationally, these are the three components that are necessary for effective trusteeship. Being a fiduciary. Some will conclude that being a fiduciary is about money. That's not true exactly. I'll get into the detail for a minute, but you have to have all three of these components for effective trusteeship. Being strategic, being a fiduciary, and being generative. When all three of those are present, in every case I've seen where those are in place, you have excellent governance. So let's break down these three in, in turn. The first is the fiduciary, and as I mentioned previously, some conclude that that's just about, I'm, I'm working in a fiduciary state, I'm taking care of the money. Really, that's only part of it. It's about making sure that you're engaged in the policy development work of the organization, that you are committed to the long-term sustainability and success of the organization, that you have responsibility to represent the, the institution to the public that put you there. It's also about helping out the foundation and raising money for, for the district. It's about fidelity to the mission, that we have a commitment to the work of legal compliance. These are the elements that are spoken to in the fiduciary. The next one is strategic. And this is different than strategic planning, and I'll talk a little bit more about where strategic planning fits a little bit later. But I'm talking about strategic action, something that is at a very, very high level. uh, meriting the board's attention. You've got little bit of time uh, to be able to do this work, and we want to be able to benefit from your wisdom and your experience and your representation to a larger body. We do this because we need your, your practical experience and we need that uh, to help us with strategic action. So some, some general ways in which this happens in this ecosystem that I was talking about is that you've got to help us see through uh, the VUCA environment. This is the work of the board to look beyond about what are the ends that you want to achieve? That you are wanting to direct the chancellor to achieve based on what you see. Um, um, the uh, the book out about blue ocean strategy talks about not focusing on the, the red bloody red ocean that they talk about because all the, all the sharks are fighting with one another, bloodying the ocean, but to look for blue oceans where there's really no contest, you're, you're looking for new opportunities, new business models. And uh, really leaving the competition irrelevant. It requires the board to reflect on evidence and trying to set those policies, those ends uh, for the chancellor uh, to achieve. Uh, the next component uh, relates to generative thinking. Now, generative thinking is not brainstorming. Brainstorming is, is just, here's a topic and let's start throwing a whole bunch of ideas at it. Uh, what uh, generative thinking is about is, is moving beyond paradigms. Oftentimes in, in uh, brainstorming, um, you'll start engaging in the work and well, we can't do this, or we can't use this idea because of X or Y, or there's a federal provision, or there's some policy we have, whatever that is. Uh, good boards are engaged in generative thinking and they're doing it lots of times and lots of different ways, at board meetings, at planning sessions, at retreats. This is the ongoing work of the board, in my view. This is one of the, the critical touchstones for the board and your professional development. It would be difficult for a trustee to engage in generative thinking that leads to policy development when I'm not engaged in my own professional development about being a good trustee. It uh, it is essential for trustees to engage in that professional development, but also to look outside by going to conferences and, and talking with peers about what they're doing. About being well-read within the literature, about the work that that goes on, what's happening in higher education. So we, we just passed a 1.4 trillion dollar budget. Uh, it also has uh, the next Cares Equivalent element. Uh, so what does that mean? What does that $28 billion mean for higher education and and how could we better use that to achieve some of the ends? What, what do we want to say to our chancellor through policy? Uh, to be able to achieve this work? Generative thinking also means that we have to continue to look to the horizon about what's changing out there. Uh, that we not become inbred and doing what we do and and uh, we, we stop looking outside. This is the work of the board as well. And one of the key ways you do that is by, by talking with other trustees, by talking to community members. Talking with businesses, and we'll talk a little bit later uh, about how that happens. Ultimately, what you uh, what you have uh, through the conversation I've had up to this point is a successful board chancellor. And these are the components that I see working around. So as Horstiger said, you've got trust. I can promise you that if you don't nail down trust, if trust is not a continuing focus of the board, uh, whether it's the board in and among themselves, or the board with the chancellor or the chancellor back with trustees, you're just, you're not going to get off the launchpad. You're going to be fighting each other, uh, you're going to be fighting with the chancellor, there's going to be confusion and chaos, misinformation. Those trust elements are absolutely necessary. They're important to esprit de corps, they're important to morale of the board for the institution. And you have to know that how the board leads, how the board does it works, the institution follows. They're, they're not independent, they are they're collaborative and understanding and monitoring what happens. So as the board demonstrates leadership by having trust and commitment and support for one another, as Horstiger talked about, then the trustees with the CEO work and investing in each other, invest in the relationship. How does that happen? It happens by going to conferences together. It happens by having board dinners together. It happens by having retreats together. It's about putting coins in your pocket that you may need a little bit later. Sometimes boards come together and they just come together for the business of the work and then they leave, they go in different directions. It's difficult to have a relationship with your trust, your fellow trustee with the chief executive if you don't spend any time together. Do you know about their children? Do you know that their wife is suffering from cancer? Do you realize that their daughter just graduated from high school? Do you know, fill in the blank? Everyone comes to this work as human beings. We're not, we're not mindless automatons. We come together to in, in what my grandmother would call a moment in time that is eggshell fragile and egg timer short. So what do you want your legacy to be? What do you want it to stand for? I hope it's about investing in each other, about the love, care and and service of each other into, in so doing, we can extend to serving people outside of our walls. And so investing in the relationship, investing in trust, investing in professional development, absolutely critical. Another key element that I found is that the chief executive has a long-term contract. If the chief executive is always looking over their shoulder, particularly if there's unrest or an unstable board. Um, the, the chief executive is going to be wondering about how long do I have a job? Uh, and that's an unfortunate situation where a CEO is in doubt about what their long-term viability is going to be. Why? It's difficult for a, a chief executive officer to begin taking on long-term propositions for the institution. The board of trustees spends a lot of time assuming that you're talking with the public, you're, you're doing the generative work, you're thinking about the future. And you've gone to good work to put those ends together, what he or she should achieve. But if they're not, if they're concerned about their long-term viability, they're probably not going to engage in the work because this is the work of many years. It's going to take a lot of time to to unpack this work and, and build coalitions and relationships externally and internally to get the work done. One of the most critical ways that we can signal to the CEO that we're committed to them, we're investing in them, we're trusting them, we're holding them accountable, is a longer-term contract. Uh, typically is somewhere between three and five years is, is a good way. I tend to encourage institutions to look at four and five years. Uh, that gives the, that gives the chief executive officer some runway to, to work and take on difficult issues and take on difficult questions and begin working on the the heavy work of cultural development within the organization. Uh, from there, another critical component to effective community colleges that I've researched is being honest with one another. Honest uh, conversation, honest and safe conversation. Uh, sometimes we hold back and uh, we don't want to hurt relationships, we don't want to offend anybody. But we have to create a safe space among trustees, within the board, with the chief executive and and back and forth, that we can be honest with each other about how can I be better? I don't have all the answers, you don't have all the answers, but together, we can do some pretty good work together. And uh, I talked previously at the beginning of our get-together here about the fact that at our retreat at Jackson College, we're very honest with each other, we're respectful, incredibly respectful. And we trust that what they're saying to us is in our best interest. And that's how we, we convey those honest evaluation. And then, of course, uh, support in difficult times. Uh, sometimes I've, I've seen uh, once, uh, once the uh, lightning storms start or the storm starts on the seas and the, the, the seas get rough, uh, people start running for cover and begin blaming. Some of that relates to the fact that there's no trust or a very weak trust. Uh, sometimes if there's no investment in the relationship or I'm not committed, or I, I'm a brand new trustee, I didn't hire that guy or that gal. Uh, I'm not committed to them. And so we are not supportive. So this is about why I asked you the question early on, why do you do what you do? What is it that you want your legacy to be about? And I would like to believe that as trustees and as CEOs, we come together that we will stand tall in difficult times and even in, in fairer times. And we need that, we need that important connection in the most difficult attempts. Here's a, a personal example of how this happened. At Jackson College, we have seven trustees, as I mentioned. I had a uh, a conversation with our board of trustees, we were dealing with some very, very thorny problems, I mean, just implacable problems here at the institution. Uh, the press was beating on us, we uh, we're, we're having difficulty. And um, I told the board of trustees that uh, I would be willing uh, to carry out what they'd asked me to do vis-à-vis our ends. But I said that I'm, I'm willing to consider that as long as I know that the board of trustees has my back, that you're supporting me. And on the spur of the moment, I said, "There are seven of you." I know that if I go forward to this work and, and I lean into this stuff, I know I'm going to start taking rounds to the chest, I'm going to get a whole lot of pushback. And when I start to fall, I want to feel 14 hands on my back supporting me. Uh, that was a really big turning point for our institution. It, it solidified our relationship, it talked about trust and commitment to one another. It talked about investment. And as perhaps a symbol of that, uh, of that moment, uh, I went to the store and I bought a bottle of wine for each of our trustees, it's called 14 Hands, it actually makes reference to the height of a, of a horse. But the point was, I told them, "Put on the mantle of their home as a reminder of our, our covenant to one another." And that has um, that has guided our work ever since. And it was a a very visual way of, and a metaphorical way of talking about our relationship. So before going into specific roles and responsibilities, let me just take a brief pause and and see if there are, are questions. I know we've got a lot of material to go, so maybe we can take a question or two and then I'll, I'll move us on. Madam President?
Um, thank you and uh, appreciate all the work that you've presented to us so far. It's very thorough and, and I think it's spot on for our good learning. With that, um, does any board member have a key question? Well, we'll give Dr. Phelan a moment to take a sip of water and any questions, board members? Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing anyone.
Marie?
Yes, Ms. Bittersman.
And I know I've got an echo, I'm trying to pick that, I apologize. Just a quick question maybe for the full board. I understand you're not currently using Robert's Rules?
Uh, we have in the past, based on Mr. Hendrick's leadership, you know, you use Mason's Rules. It's my interest to shift us to Robert's Rules this year. And it was something I was going to discuss at the next board meeting. So that, that's the answer to your question, Ms. Bittersman. Are there any questions for Dr. Phelan?
Um, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor.
Uh, thank you, and, and I want to thank Dr. Phelan uh, for taking time to be with us today. Um, this is an incredibly rich uh, presentation and it's giving us a lot to think about. I'd like to go all the way back to the beginning where you talked about uh, the two committees that your board has. And I was surprised that you do not have a policy committee. So my question is, how does your board go about developing new policies or revising its policies? If it doesn't have a committee that is focused on that?
Well, uh, thank you, Dr. Thor. Um, and I'm, I'm going to be talking about uh, uh, committees a little bit later, but a quick answer to your question, Dr. Thor, is this. Number one, um, John Carver actually discourages the use of committees. Uh, and especially for small boards like ours and, and, and yours, seven members. Uh, one of the challenges that often happens, and it's a detractor to trust in many cases, is that you have committees going off and, and doing their work. And, and the, the full board does not have the benefit of participating and hearing the richness of that discussion about uh, what, what generative thinking has brought us to this point. Um, why do we need to have a policy for this? Uh, most, most institutions, usually policy governance have between 30 and 40 policies. Um, some organizations, some community colleges, the last college where I served, we had over 300 policies. There's no way on, on this green planet that a board of trustees can have the knowledge about those many policies, that many policies. And, and Carver says, "That's really not the job of the board." Um, many of those policies are operational and that's the work of, of the, the chancellor. And, and his work to have this internal governance work, and that's the, the work of having college policies. The board's policies are to much a higher level, there's about 30, 40 of them. And so uh, my answer is the reason we don't have a, a policy committee is because we only have about 30 or 40, I think we've got uh, 38. Uh, we don't have many of them. And we're reviewing them all the time. In fact, we review every policy every year to make sure that it is current and relevant uh, to a very changing ecosystem. And secondly, of course, Carver recommends that uh, you have few committees, the fewer the better, and none is great. And third, uh, our board as a way to keep us connected and sharing the, the benefits and expertise of everyone is to do the policy work as a committee of the whole. Uh, we have a two reading exercise and looking at all of our policies that come before the board as they're reviewed. We also use planning sessions and retreats to introduce any new policy ideas that may be recommended by the C, by the CEO or recommended by board members.
Thank you.
Any other uh, questions?
Uh, yes, uh, Chairman Sullivan, uh, I didn't quite stand all the conversation about Mason and Robert's Rules of Order. We adopted uh, Mason several years ago, and I'm wondering what, were you talking about you wanting to change back to Roberts or what?
Um, I was going to ask that question at the next board meeting, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll press on.
Please, go on. I know we have a lot of ground to cover, so thank you.
So let me move into a board and CE uh, roles at, at this point and uh, uh, talk about them at a pretty high level. So the role of the, the board president. The role of the board president is what I call the first among equals. The board president has no more authority or less authority than any other trustee. However, she does have additional duties that she has to carry out. She needs to speak as board uh, chair or board president. She, she represents the whole of the board. Many boards get in trouble when we've got lots of independent voices. Uh, Carver talks about the, the, the rule of one, the, the rule of the voice of one. And so having, have the board again, understanding your why, that we subordinate ourselves to a collective vis-à-vis the board, we, we then let the board chair or the board president speak on behalf of the full of board. And we don't have dissenting opinion. We make a decision as a board and there aren't dissents out there. We, we subordinate to the will of the board after a vote has been taken. Uh, the board uh, president also makes sure that, that policy governance principles are being carried out, assigning uh, committee work. Uh, and making sure that all applicable laws are being fulfilled. These, these are the principal duties of, of the board president. Um, likewise, members have specific responsibilities and roles and and one is to, the first and probably most important is to hire and commit and support the chancellor. Um, this is the person that is our leader, they represent, they are the face of the institution in many ways. And they have the uh, just huge responsibility uh, to lead the organization. And so we want to support them in any way we can. We want the chancellor to feel comfortable in coming up to us as trustees and saying, "How could we help?" Uh, high professionalism and integrity uh, and approaching the board. I think that's our responsibility, serving on these boards, that we do that, that we're incredibly respectful, that we continue to engage and, and trust with one another. And that we realize is that there are differences in viewpoints and philosophies and politics and all of those kinds of things. But at the end of the day, folks, we are just human beings coming together to serve the public. And so we subordinate all those other things for what is in the best interest of the institution. Again, why do you do what you do? Uh, we also want to be careful that we don't dominate, and this is one of the roles also of the board president to make sure that all members have been heard, that there's not domination or filibustering. Also, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit later too, that the board members have a responsibility to regularly evaluate themselves, but also engage in self-evaluation of the board as a whole. And so in many ways, um, what I have learned is that um, good governance looks a lot like this. Uh, it has lots of good elements to it, uh, lots of key components, and we as board members want to be able to do that. Board self-evaluation is absolutely critical. I would hope that at least I do, as I think about every board meeting I've been at, I thought, "How could I do that better? What did I do well, what didn't I?" But you actually have to engage in the self-evaluative work. And it's not that hard. I, I just copied a page from our uh, board self-evaluation practice. We do this every year. This is a summative action. It's on our calendar. Uh, board members uh, evaluate uh, how the board is uh, working as a whole. Uh, you'll see a lot of the topics there that speak to some of the points that I've mentioned previously. Uh, we also look at benchmarking, look at normative data from other institutions and how they're doing. Uh, what I do recommend to boards is that once you have an instrument for self-evaluation, that you, you use it consistently. Uh, that you're not changing it all the time because it would be hard for you to see, "Well, how are we doing on the trust index?" If you're changing the nature, the stem of the question. So whatever you put together and agree to, use that. But I would also say this is a summative action. Uh, it's really unfair to trustees to say, "Well, let's wait till we get to the end of the year, let's evaluate how we've done and the past 12 months have gone by the board." You should also think about how you evaluate yourselves, the board collectively uh, in a formative way. One of the ways that our board does that is at the end of every meeting, there's a moment on our agenda, which I'll show you in a second, which uh, which reviews uh, how the board is doing and how we could make it better. We also engage in this work uh, when we're at planning session. So I would encourage not only a, a summative event, but also figure out how we can improve along the way, so you haven't wasted 12 months before you make improvement in key areas. There's also responsibilities for uh, the chief executive. There's also responsibilities for the chief executive. I call it the Phelan Five, this is something that I developed, and from the chancellor's point of view, these are things that have just served me well, and I know that your chancellor understands all of these, but it bears, we're saying, especially with new trustees on the video conference here together. My philosophy has always been, wherever there are two or more trustees, there's that, that's where the CEO should be too. Never surprise the board. Pick your battles with the board as a whole on issues. Really evaluate what's important and what's nice versus what's necessary, what is essential. Also, this is a big one, and I will point this out in just a second, and that's communication. So making sure that whatever one trustee knows, all the trustees know. Sometimes when one trustee just has information, no matter how innocent the request might come be, sometimes that is shared with another trustee, and the reaction is, well, I didn't know that, why don't I know that? And no trustee wants to be surprised. And certainly humility is the role that I have understood from day one as a chief executive, that we come to this work in service of others, and we do so with humility. One of the ways that I engage in this work is, and what I found to be effective, whether it's this tool or not, this is just a copy of what I use, is a regular briefing of the board. Sometimes it's every week, sometimes it's twice a month, sometimes it's once a month. It really depends on what's happening. It includes some factual information, some data, and how it relates to our institution. It includes a national and state perspective, it includes what's happening about the college, and it also includes some events that are coming up that I want to make sure that they're aware of, that they're coming to, that they're invited to, that they participate in within the institution. I also want to offer a little more finer, I guess, a finer point on some of the work that I've been doing around what I call covenant governance. It's elements that I've learned by looking at policy governance and just looking at governance, particularly from business and industry, profit, nonprofit, corporate, and so forth. And covenant really speaks to me as a binding relationship. This is a longstanding, deep-seated, long-term commitment that we've made to one another, that we understand our why, chancellor and trustee and board, all collectively coming together to do this work. We're committed to this work, and we're committed to each other almost to a fault. And that's something that I have found. Let me unpack this a little bit for you. So for me, this has to be a deep and abiding covenant between the board, board member, and the chancellor has to feel supported by the board to drive this change, the point I meant earlier. And it has to be authentic, it can't be surface, it's got to be real. And that's expressed by how we interact with one another in social fashion in board meetings and how we interact individually. Something that I do pretty regularly is I get on the phone and talk with trustees, you know, a couple times a semester. Sometimes I could take them out to lunch at different times, but... There's also the work of the, what I call the interior work of cultural development, and that takes a lot of time. This is the development of the organization, but the development of the board and the board-CEO relationship more particularly. So again, you want to have a longstanding CEO. If you're going to attract and retain a high-level, highly competent, knowledgeable chief executive officer, you want to make sure that you have a culture of governance that is attractive, where the chief executive, someone who's been in the chair already, is willing to come and be a part of that, they want to be a part of that. Everybody wants to be on a winning team, whether you're a trustee or a chancellor. But you want to have a culture that strikes at that and is very well-known. And for many of you, you know that the work of culture is about a seven to 10-year process. So as I said, this is long-term work. So I created this model of what I call optimized governance leadership, and again, this is a result of research. These are the three things you got to have for optimized governance, whether it's policy governance or not. Long-term committed CEO, dedicated people, committed long-term to the work and the service of other. We call it the love, care, and service of others, and then a unified and committed board. We drive a lot of work here at the college by what we call TCS squared, or total commitment to student success. Everything is driving that. We're all unified, we're all committed to that work, and it really drives for us. Some additional detail about the interior work. As I mentioned previously, the culture of the college follows the culture of the board. You are the linchpin, you're the tipping point for everything that happens in the institution by the...
It's seven o'clock.
Sorry about that, my computer does that. What happens at the board? What's on your agenda? What you talk about? What happens and how that culture is defined sets the tone for the rest of the institution. So your words, the way you respect and talk to one another, those are all important things that speak to the culture of the board and the relationship. The commitment that you make to the work, the intentionality of the work. And the far-right box is there, you see the what happens when you don't, and when you're not doing the interior work, the cultural work. You have an institution that is suboptimal, at the very least. At worst, you have fighting and confusion and a very negative culture, and one which not everybody wants to work for. And also, it is important that we continue to do the assessment work, that we continue to evaluate the work that we do. And so assessment, evaluation are important components of the interior work of building a culture. So you demonstrate as a board, as the leaders of the institution, that we hold ourselves accountable to our work, what we've committed to as our own culture, to our board ends. And so breaking it down, covenant governance even further, I use design thinking principles. This comes from Saul Kaplan. He's a great author and talks about the work of design thinking principles and practicing and prototyping and doing this work through relationship building, learning and professional development, talking a lot, staying disciplined and focused in your swim lanes, what's board responsibility versus chief executive work, committing to that culture and working on it all the time. There are many, many cultures in your organization, but you have to set the tone for the whole of the organization, and then, of course, move to excellence. So let me again take another brief pause and see if there are any questions before we move on to policy governance. Madam Chair? Madam President, excuse me.
No problem. Thank you. Board members, any questions?
This is Jaclyn. Can you please elaborate on the design thinking piece? You piqued my interest. I'm very familiar with design thinking. The slide just kind of flew by a bit quickly, and I didn't see how to connect prototyping with governance and policy. If you could elaborate for a moment or two, I'd love that, thank you.
Sure. Design thinking principles are really, when you think about it, at the core, is design with the customer in mind, at the customer at the center of the conversation, the student-customer at the center of the conversation, the taxpayer-customer at the center of the conversation. So one of the first and highest priorities of the board is understanding what is the customer wanting, what is the owner wanting, and providing opportunities to gather that information. And insofar as that the board is engaged in generative thinking and thinking about the future, what is it that we want the board to achieve? And we would define that by ends. And so prototyping is a lot of ways, is a good way to actually do that work by engaging in micro experiments. Well, that can happen in a science lab, but how does that happen for a board of trustees? We're going to adopt this policy, we're going to set this end, we're going to try this way, we're going to direct the president to do this work vis-à-vis policy. We're going to evaluate, we're going to gather the data, we're going to listen to how the customer or how the owner reacted to that, make adjustments. You may have heard it from W. Edwards Zemming, it's similar, plan, do, check, act kind of thing. But this really is about having micro experiments and keeping the customer at the center of the conversation before making broad wholesale changes, and failing in a few before you fail in many.
Jaclyn, do you have any further questions on that one?
No, thank you.
I'd like to comment. I've been acquainted with design thinking as well, creating, you know, some prototype program strategies, et cetera. And how do you do that within the context of a board that is not focused on operations, but instead has an interest in policy? How can you make that translation or transition?
Well, actually, and again, I would encourage you to take a look at, encourage you to take a look at Saul Kaplan's book on the Business Innovation Factory is the name of it. The board can engage in its own micro experiments. You can engage in experiments about trusting relationships, you can engage in experiments about reduced numbers of committees. We can experiment with having our work done as a board of the whole. We can experiment with having community forum, community township halls, if you will, where we gather information. Particular strategies for applying trust and micro experiments with regard to how we evaluate the efficacy and effectiveness of the board. So it doesn't have to be anything big and grandiose, such as, you know, starting a new non-fee-based tuition fee policy. I mean, everybody can engage in these prototypes, and seeing that happen at the board level would be really a nice signal to the rest of the organization.
Thank you for that. Board members, is there any other... Yes, Dr. Thor?
Just a quick question. Dr. Phelan, would you be willing to share with us the full board self-evaluation instrument?
Yes, ma'am, I will. I will, I'll make a copy of that. I can get that to Elsa.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Madam Chair, with your permission.
Please go.
All right. And as I mentioned, I've got more material on these slides, and they're designed to be a resource. I'm just going to hit the high points of policy governance. So as you know, John Carver and Maryam Mayhew, or Maryam Carver now, really created this. The most principal function, which I've alluded to already, is for the board to pursue using policy governance a future-focused purpose. Your policies need to be future-focused with an eye toward the horizon about what you want to achieve on behalf of the owners, what you want the college to accomplish on behalf of the owners, and hold the president, or chancellor in this case, accountable to that work. Now, policy development sounds like a really, a big thing, and it is, but it sounds like it's also very busy, very complicated. It doesn't have to be. But here's the point that's often missed. Policy development is a collaboration between the chancellor and the board. This is not just for the board to do, it's not just for the chancellor to do. And why is that? Well, you don't abrogate your essential responsibility to the chancellor, and the chancellor doesn't take on that work, because at some point, he's going to be held accountable for it. So really what you want to do is use the chancellor from the standpoint that he has the knowledge and detail, and through his staff, understanding the kinds of things that the board needs to be aware of, and brings that information perhaps in a policy suggestion, or at the very least, information to the board that they can use with the generative thinking, with the professional development they receive through their reading, and looking on the horizon to create policy. And then the board sets that policy. Now, can that policy be codified and wordsmithed and tweaked a little bit between the president and the board assistant? Absolutely, absolutely. You don't have time to do all that wordsmithing, but you can react to it. It's a collaborative work between the board as a body politic and as the executive. So this comes from a book by Pamela Fisher, it's a fairly new book out called Trusteeship in Community Colleges. I'm not going to go through all the detail for it, again, this is going to be a resource for you, but these are the responsibilities that trustees have in the policymaking process. You've got to monitor the policies, you just can't set them and leave them alone. You've got to have a manageable number of policies you can handle. In fact, if you take on too many policies, the moment that you start approving operational policies and things like that, you take on as a board liability, and potentially personal liability for any failure related to those policies for not being fully deployed, illegally or otherwise. These are the kinds of things that you need to take on. And again, it needs to be forward-thinking, future-forward, and it needs to be evaluated. Now, the chancellor doesn't get off easy either. These are the responsibilities that I was alluding to earlier. When the chancellor is aware of something coming down the line, you know, there hears this new information coming out, this is a change in federal law, these are things that we need to think about, this is what I'm hearing in the community. The chancellor has a responsibility to feed information up. The chancellor is the sole conduit between the organization and the board. So he's at that tipping point, if you will, to go both ways. And so he needs to make sure that the board gets the information that they need, it's in a succinct form, that it's really clear, and then the board makes that interpretation. Certainly, he can provide recommendations, excuse me, on how that happens. The Policy Governance book, which really got all this started, is this one, the Policy Governance Model. This is something that we provide for every trustee, it's part of our, it's part of our orientation process, and it really breaks out the work of policy governance about this relationship. Two of these components relate to the board of trustees, and two of them relate to the responsibilities of the chief executive. This is how we've laid it out, how Carver lays it out. So on the far left, the chair ultimately has the responsibility of making sure that the board is complying with its own policies related to governance process and the board-CEO linkage, the board-chancellor linkage, however you want to call that. The CEO is responsible and accountable to achievement of the ends and providing monitoring opportunities for those ends, and making sure that he or she stays within the executive limitations, those fences that were created by the board that you cannot go beyond. So let's plow into these just a little bit further. So the governance process, this is how the board defines its own work. This is how you say you were going to conduct ourselves. This is what you agree to in policy. Without the board defining the policies that define how you're going to do your work, it's all up for grabs. I'm a new trustee coming in, and I can do whatever I want, and what I'm going to do is based on what I know from the last board I was on, the last church board, the last chamber of commerce board, the bank board, the corporation board. So you have to have clarity about, this is how we will govern. This is the detail of the work that we do, that our chair speaks with one voice, the one voice principle, on behalf of a larger body. And the core of this work, as you've heard me rant on this already, and that is governing on behalf of an identifiable ownership, and you've got to be talking to them to know what they're wanting from you. That's why you're there. Secondarily, the comment was about the use of committees. I've hit some of these high points as Dr. Thor asked the question, but so often, we get into, sometimes I heard one board chair refer to it as committee hell. There's just so many committees, and it becomes problematic when these committees are not committees of the board, they're committees of the board, and then there's all kinds of staff people involved, it creates a power differential between employees and board members, and provides the opportunity for trustees sometimes to cross the line into operations. And so it's really concerning. Here's the key point about setting committees, too. If you're going to set a committee as a board, make, fully sure, make sure that whatever you're tasking the committee to do by policy, by even bylaws for that matter, whatever you're tasking them to do, make sure you're not undercutting the chancellor, making sure that you haven't assigned some of these duties already to the chancellor, because now you've just cut the legs out from underneath the chancellor, and you've got somebody else doing it. So now there's confusion on who's doing the work and who's going to be held accountable to the work. So I happen to agree with Carver on this. I would use committees sparingly, you're only seven members of the board, having the opportunity to build trust by doing as much work as you can as a committee of the whole is probably a good idea. Madam Chair, this might be one of the things that you want to consider as a prototype, for example. You try doing the work of committees maybe for a while, except maybe for some areas, which audit tends to be a pretty big one from time to time, but something for you to think about. Again, my role is to try to post my ideas for you. Here's a final word about committees, and I really like this quote from Carver, is that you've got to use committees to help you do your own job. You need consultation, you don't need someone else making the decisions. You don't want to have this cross-cutting conflict where you're intervening into the work that you've already assigned the chancellor to achieve. This is a copy of what our policy looks like. They don't have to be overwhelmingly complex. You engage in the level of policies down to the level of specificity that you think is necessary for the board to have agreement. So you start with a broad, global policy at the top, and then he calls them nested sets, or think about them as mixing bowls. You can take them down to lower levels of clarity that you need as a board to make sure, okay, I can agree to this now. I couldn't agree to it before as a broad topic, but I really need to have it down to this level, and that you have agreement on as a board. Again, you have to agree to all of these. So again, reasonable interpretation of this work into a level that makes sense. So this is the work of boards and what you hold yourselves accountable for, and the chair ultimately responsible for making sure this is getting done.
Excuse me, Dr. Phelan, I just wanted to, for the new board members, I believe three primary committees as they exist currently in our district. We have the audit and finance foundation committee liaison, and then, or a liaison from the board to the foundation, and the charter high school committee, as well as the last one was a policy committee. So I want to say, maybe we're on the right track based on your comments, but I like your idea of the prototype or the micro experiment, too. So just FYI. I like your idea of the prototype or the micro experiment too. So just FYI.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, just ask yourself, is this the work, this is what our board uses. Is this the work that the president or chancellor can achieve as part of operations? Or is this something that we really need to bring in a consultant? We really need to understand this matter further before we can set policy, not have committees do the work on behalf of the chancellor. So you don't undercut them. The, the last component that I really want to hit here, uh, and this is hard and, and a lot of boards miss this part. Or they delegate it. And that is defining who's the owner. Many boards are not clear about who the owner is. And in policy governance, that is a, a central precept to the work. Defining who the owners are. And so who are the owners? Who are the people who owe the college trustees owe existence to? The board, uh, college owes existence to and for whom they are selected to steward the board on behalf of them. That's the work that you have to do. Many times I see boards, they're just staffing that out to the chancellor and saying, hey, go out and meet with the public. Uh, go out and do a survey, make sure you're offering programs and services uh, to what we need and, and that's the work. Or worse still, uh, the board makes, uh, board members make judgments about the people who come and have concerns that are expressed during the public comments section during a board meeting. Uh, that's not, that's not connecting with the ownership. This is the, this is the work of the board alone, not the chancellor, not the chancellor's staff. This is the work of the board. So that means you as trustees have to connect with the ownership through uh, community-wide surveys or county-wide surveys or, or town hall meetings or, um, focus groups or, or meeting with the chamber board members, meeting with the business board, the, the economic development board, your, your peers, your compatriots out there to understand as the owners, what do they want you to achieve, which you can put and codify in policy? So the executive can carry it out. Many times board gets, can, board members get confused about who the owners are. Um, a, an employee comes in and says, um, you know, I, uh, and you, you wonder, are they an owner or are they, uh, are they a shareholder or are they a stakeholder? The answer to that question relies, uh, lies in the question that they're answering. If I have a staff member who comes in and suggests the board at the public comments section, I want to talk to this board about the fact that I have not seen a wage increase in the last five years. I'm upset about that. That is a comment coming from a stakeholder, not an owner. However, if the same person came in and said, uh, I'm a taxpayer in this community. I'm wondering how the board is using the tax dollars that have been given them and using them in stewardship to make sure that we are, we are diverse in leadership and trusteeship and student, uh, student, um, recruitment and retention. Now that, that ladies and gentlemen is the question of an owner. So really understanding the board has to be clear about who your owners are. Declare that in policy, go after that. That doesn't mean you discount everybody else. Of course you want to listen to your employees. You want to listen to, uh, people from outside your area. You want to listen to people who are not owners. And there's lots of different groups out there. Much of that, uh, on, on those other components, you can, you can delegate to the chief executive. Uh, you, but you can also listen to them if you want. That's your choice. But a lot of that other work is left to the president because a lot of that work relates to operations. The owners are the ones that are absolutely, you cannot discount, you cannot staff this out, that you have to do that work and you have to do that routinely because conditions are changing or ecosystem is changing. And this is not hard work. You want to engage them so that you can be more effective. You can achieve more of what they're wanting you to do. So this public engagement with the owners, once you've defined who they are is important. You need to be clear with them about why you're coming together, what you hope to hear from them. This is not about talking about operational matters. This is not about grievances. There are departments and processes for the, the work to be able to, to get that information to your chief executive and he and his staff and his campus presidents are needing. But this is the best way. This is the board's work absolutely without question. Uh, if you want to conduct that work, sometimes, uh, having trustees present and listening is great. Uh, we use a facilitator so that the board members are not encumbered by asking the questions, that they're listening. Uh, it's not time for the board members to engage or to defend. This is the opportunity to listen. So someone says, well, I'm just concerned about, uh, I'm concerned about the marketing of the college and you know, uh, you, you want to get to the ownership questions. You want to drive them to the ownership questions about the future of the organization. How you can set policy to drive the future of the institution. You're going to have to set those tenants early on and ask questions that look like this. If they get off in the direction, make sure your facilitator is clear about, all right, we're, we're going to make note of that. We're going to get that to the chancellor and the individual college presidents, but we need to focus on this issue. And, uh, this is not a time for grieving or complaining. Set those tones really out there real early. You might even want to share, uh, these questions in advance. Uh, what about non-owners? Um, I alluded to that a little bit earlier. Uh, one of the ways that that's often done and it's a, it's a pretty good tool and that is shared governance and shared governance, um, uh, sometimes needs a little definition. This is something that I use internally. Uh, sometimes the word governance can be a little bit off-putting. It sounds really big to some people. Sometimes it's off-putting to a board. It sounds like you're invading my space. The, the bottom line is, you know, call it Fred if you want. Uh, shared governance is a, is a reference by which employees have the opportunity for input and collaboration into the decision-making process. The, the bulk of that shared governance work happens at the, at the college level. Um, if, if you want to think about it this way, maybe this, this context will help you. Think about your chancellor's having an internal governance operation in concert with the college presidents and the staffs of those presidents. They're handling all of that. So the faculty want to be involved in the creation of the curriculum. They want to be involved in how the assessment is undertaken. So they know the efficacy of their work. The student services people want to, want to know that the process that you're using and how they will be evaluated will be considered. They, we, we all want to have input into our own fate. Do we not? We're in a democracy for Pete's sake. So it, it's not surprising that we all want to have, um, input into the work. Uh, we want to be recognized. We want to be valued in the way that we receive that, that appreciation and value is by someone listening. Uh, and in the worst case scenario, when nobody's listening, then that's when we get into the fist pounding and, and, uh, unrest and, and reckoning and, and all kinds of things happening when people aren't listening. So we don't want to shut off the conversation. We want to welcome the conversation. Um, and, and that is true from, from the non-owners as well. And we do that in, in principle through shared governance. They want to be involved in the process. And so I would encourage that to happen and encourage, and, and you should encourage that with your chancellor to let that happen at the college operational level, the college, uh, internal governance, the external governance, the, the high-mindedness, the overall governance of the institution. That's your work. From time to time, there may be a shared governance recommendation that comes to the chancellors from a campus president, or maybe from a campus community, or maybe it's the support staff association, whatever that might be. That will come up as it relates to the governance of the institution, the body politic, the, the constitutional responsibilities you have, the bylaws, the, the policies that you hold the chancellor accountable for. That's your bailiwick. That's clearly where you are. Uh, that's the work that needs to happen. The bottom line on all this and listening to non-owners and, and using shared governance as a vehicle is that you create a, um, an organization that has higher morale, uh, better collaboration, better trust and better linkage between the, the board and the, the senior governance group, if you will, and the operations of what happens, the internal policies and internal protocols that, that they, uh, put in. Um, the, the second component of the quadrant of, um, policy governance is the board CEO linkage. And the responsibility for ensuring that this is accomplished is the, is the board president. And, uh, this is the responsibility, what happens there. So, uh, this is how the policies are defined in which how the board is going to interact with the president, uh, excuse me, the chancellor, how that happens. The chancellor is the only employee of the board. That's it. Uh, anything that has to happen, the chancellor is your conduit with regard to institutional questions. You've got ideas, you've got thoughts, you've got questions. You want to take those through the chancellor. They are your only employee and they are the one voice. The minute that the board goes outside of the chancellor and starts to interface with the rest of the institution, you're violating the one voice principle. Insofar as that the board chair speaks on behalf of, excuse me, the board president, excuse me, Madam President. The, the moment that the board, uh, speaks outside of the, the single voice, the one voice of the board president. Again, you began to create different interpretations, different understandings, dissension, lack of clarity. One voice for the board, one voice for the chancellor. And that chancellor's one voice is the voice speaking to the whole of the college presidents, to the institutions, to the associations, to the faculty, to the staff, to the administration. That one voice principle is absolutely necessary. You want to codify this relationship in board policy. When it is not codified and very clear and very functional, we create confusion, uh, distrust and, uh, and, uh, conflict within the organization. So the board works as a whole and directs the president through policy only. That's how that has to happen. But yet you hold the chancellor, uh, accountable for that work. The way that you do that is through performance monitoring. And so, uh, this monitoring can happen in lots of ways. It can happen in formal ways through monitoring reports, one of which I'll talk about in just a moment, but you can also do it informally. You don't want to play a gotcha game, uh, with your chancellor. This is, you want to build trust. And so you want to be able to respect the, the office of the chancellor by asking, uh, I, I'd like this additional information. And that's totally fine. And the chancellor is responsible to get that to you. And again, the chancellor will follow that principle of making sure that what one trustee knows, all trustees know. Uh, here's another important component that is often missed by trustees. Performance monitoring is not an evaluation of the, the CEO. Um, oftentimes we, we have, um, in addition to the monitoring reports, and I've got this misstated, oftentimes we say that the, um, in addition to doing the monitoring, uh, reports to the board, we also have an evaluation of the president and it's covering lots of other things. We ask presidents, chancellors to, to put together reports about how did you spend your last year? Lots of extraneous detail. Carver says the performance of the college is synonymous with the performance of the chancellor. So you evaluate the chancellor by virtue of what the performance monitoring is happening. You've, you've defined and created these ends reports and the executive limitations. They're either compliant with them or they're not. And based on that level of compliance, they either are doing well and in, and in compliance and successful, or maybe they're not all the way in, in, uh, uh, compliance or they're not in compliance at all. And that's how the chancellor should be evaluated. That's the message that you send the board through policy established, uh, by the ends and by executive limitations, things not to exceed. To have something additional that the president or the chancellor is being evaluated for creates confusion. Now he's wondering about how am I really being evaluated? Uh, other, all these other things. How many meetings did you attend? I actually had one president of a community college said that he was reporting to the board, uh, all the, all the meetings that he went to, including how many funerals he attended. That's just silliness. It's a misuse of the recognition of the, uh, and respect of the chancellor, and it, it really doesn't add any value from, from a board evaluation point of view. Um, here's a copy of what we use. Again, uh, this is a monitor, excuse me, a monitoring report for executive limitations. Uh, this is how this happens. The monitoring report for the president happens in ends and executive limitations only. Uh, this one for us deals with the treatment of students. So it begins with a broad policy statement. Uh, it includes an interpretation. So once the board defines this policy statement, now it's up to the chancellor to say, all right, board, uh, this is what you said. This is how I interpreted it. Is that right? If that answer is no from the board as a collective, then increase the level of the nested sets, the mixing bowls, go to a finer level of specificity so that he's clear about what you're asking. Once that is clear and the interpretation is correct, then it's a matter of providing evidence. Uh, what are the evidences that, that are, are showing that you actually have achieved those, that you have in fact been in compliance? And the fact that we use a lot of technology now, you can have URL linkages so the board members can go out and check this stuff if they want more information. If a chancellor is not in compliance, he needs to express where am I out of compliance and when will I get back into compliance? There are other informal ways that you can, uh, move in terms of monitoring as well, using institutional dashboards is another example or independent requests, as I had mentioned. I think it's also important that the board is really clear about the frequency of monitoring. Our board has chosen that they want to see every one of these, uh, annually. Um, and, and we are, um, we're actually giving some consideration. Well, maybe we only need to see this one every, every two years. Uh, for example, organizational culture, do we need to see that every two years? Or, excuse me, land use, do we need to see that every year? Land isn't moving around a whole lot. So we don't need to see it annually. That's one, for example, they're considering. This gives the board a sense about what's coming up, what they can prepare for. And it also gives a nod to the chancellor about what's coming. And so that he and his staff can prepare to get the monitoring report to the board. The third quadrant is ends, and I've alluded to a lot of this. This is the board's future view about what's coming. It's a value-based statement about what you have concluded that the owners are asking you to achieve. You've established those ideas in concert with, um, generative thinking, with your own research, with your reading through a professional development and have created these ends. Uh, there are multiple inputs that feed into what eventually becomes the ends and it represents the will of the board. As I mentioned, each, uh, ends statement, each policy statement has a global statement. This happens to be an example. I just wanted to give you some examples. Sometimes that's helpful for folks to see what other colleges are doing. We do a lot of benchmarking as well. Uh, this is how we've stated our global ends statement. And from this flow, these six N's. So we've got, uh, I want to say, well, you just saw the, the table for how many executive uh, limitation, um, monitoring reports, uh, we have. Uh, and then we have six ends monitoring reports, uh, that are, that are indicated, uh, here. So this is how, uh, that work is done. Again, it's going to be unique. Uh, one of the things I encourage people to do is not take work from one college and try to bolt it into another. Uh, your own locale is different, your own culture is different, your own community is different, your own owners are different. So you want to make sure you spend the time necessary to do the work and bring in a consultant, have a, have a group of trustees working together with the trust, with the consultants, whatever works out well for you. But this is absolutely the work of the board and cannot be staffed out. The final quadrant of the executive limitations are, uh, excuse me, the quadrant of, uh, policy governance is executive limitations. Uh, these are the thou shalt nots. Sometimes, uh, and I've encountered that too. When I first came here, I had a sheriff and I were, uh, riding around on a golf court and he said, uh, I was talking to him about, uh, some community work and he said, why do you have those ends? Why are they stated in the negative? It just seems confusing. Uh, Carver created this way, uh, to put them in the negative, to be real clear what the president cannot do to bracket. This is a kind of a Garden of Eden question, right? You can eat from everything else. We're, we're putting a fence around this particular tree and you can't go there. You can't eat this fruit. Don't do that. Everything else you can do. For me, having, uh, worked with policy governance for many years, it is really liberating for me to know what I cannot do. The board defines what I cannot do by policy. Everything else I can use a reasonable person's interpretation to get the job done. The job being, uh, the ends of the institution. I know that absolutely positively, uh, in no case, no circumstance can I exceed these executive limitations, even if I can get a, I can get one of the ends achieved by violating that, uh, executive limitation. I know that if I do that, that's grounds for termination. So these are bracketed off. I know that I cannot go there. No matter, even if I can achieve the objective, the board has codified in policy. They're stated in negatives. So I'm absolutely clear about what I cannot do and I find that helpful. Uh, here's an example of our executive limitations policy. So, uh, stated in the negative, uh, again, this one really relates to financial conditions. So I can't give myself a cash increase, for example. Uh, I, I cannot make, I cannot have the college in a position where we are less, uh, in a cash, uh, status than what we need to, um, be able to satisfy in a fiscal year. I, I need to make sure that I have two years, uh, two, excuse me, two months of fund balance in the bank at all times. I mean, they're, they're very good, clear, uh, elements. Um, a few other considerations with policy governance, uh, is, uh, employee interactions by the board. Uh, sometimes I get people saying, well, uh, and I, I hinted at this a little bit earlier. Uh, so does this mean with policy governance, I can only work with the college president or the college chancellor? Uh, the answer to that is no, that's, that's just not true. Uh, you can do that, but you want to be very, very clear about how you do that because of the power differential, the power structure that exists here. This quote from Carver is really, really good. So when you've already delegated the operational performance through, uh, executive limitations and, uh, ends to, um, the chancellor, they're the sole link. And so whenever the board chooses to, uh, go on by a board member and, and begin talking and instructing and evaluating staff, you've now crossed the line. You've left, you've left policy governance. Uh, you violated the, the respect to the chancellor. You violated the, the commitment, instruction, policies of the board and created confusion within, uh, the rest of the organization. I say that because the board functions as a whole independently. No trustee has any authority whatsoever. If you as an individual trustee want to approach the chancellor and say, I want you, Mr. Chancellor, to establish a new policy where we've got a fee uh, to tax anyone who has cactuses on their property, uh, before they take a class. I'm making something just crazy up. Uh, you cannot do that. You can have that idea. You may want it fervently. You may feel very strongly. You may want it fervently, you may feel very strongly about making sure that any student enrolled that has a cactus on their property is paying a cactus fee, but you can't do it. From the chancellor's point of view, their responsibility in policy governance is just take it as advice. This is just advice. However, if the board, in its wisdom, thinks that this is a good idea and they vote to make this happen, then God just spoke. The chancellor has no choice but to carry this work out. Now, also said, sometimes, as I indicated previously, a board will have a question. If the board has a question and I can reasonably carry it out, I'm not worried about it. I'll gather the information again, sharing with the board as a whole. But another way, this is something that I developed within our institution to be real clear. I continue to share this with our board of trustees, and it's a really a layman's approach of understanding board policy. Executive limitations and ends on the CEO's side, and then the board governance and focus on the left in the two policy quadrants. That's what we're seeing here. That kind of clarity, be real clear about that. For new trustees, we use this as part of our orientation process, but we are very deliberative about what that is. I will also tell you that we have a board policy that says that when the board exits their swim lane and comes into mine, I have a policy-driven requirement to notify the board and the board chair, in your case, board president, that I appreciate what's being proposed here. I'm always respectful. I realize what's happening here, but this is really my area of responsibility. And so with respect, I must ask that I be allowed to do this. And by the same token, and should the chancellor drift into the board's swim lane, then this is an opportunity for the board to point that out to the chancellor. And that's part of our policy. There was a question about strategic planning. The board is focused on the ends of the institution by looking at the horizon, policy development, their own research, gathering information from the owners, putting those policies together, as I mentioned previously. That's the work, and they codify that future view in a future state by the ends. The strategic planning role is the role of the chancellor, not the board, the role of the chancellor. The strategic plan, plain and simple, is the responsibility of the chancellor to carry out the ends that you've assigned. And so he needs the bandwidth, the runway, pick your metaphor, to be able to achieve that, and he can't do it all by himself. He needs the campus, the college presidents, and the staff, and the chancellor's office to be able to get this work done. For our institution, we tried to create a linkage between what else is happening at the institution. So here is our, here's our vision statement. We tied it to our TCS squared goals, which is 90, 80, 70. It's a statement, it's a percentage of persistence and success. We tie that into the board's global ends policy. Like you, with the Higher Learning Commission being our regional creditor, these are the five criterion that they require. So everything kind of flows together. From there, it moves into my leadership council, who are the advocates for this work. They contribute objectives to this. It relates to, whoops, excuse me, whoa, what happened there? It relates to the work of the board specifically on the end statements. And then at the bottom, it talks about their principal goals. And then you can't see the next pages. I was trying to get to it inadvertently. And there are quarterly updates from each of my leadership council members about the progress remaining. As an information item only, I share this with our board of trustees. But the strategic planning role is the chancellor's role. The ends role is the board's role in future focus. Now, back to a final couple of components for the board under policy governance, and that is the agenda. The board declares its priorities in part through its agenda. And from my point of view, and based on successful institutions of higher education, particularly those using policy governance, but your agenda should be about consequential issues, not incidental issues. So here's the question that I've got for you as a board, as you're thinking about working with your chancellor, defining what's on your agenda. First of all, you need to recognize that the board meeting is the board's meeting. It's not a meeting of the board speaking to the public. It's about the board speaking to each other. How do we talk to one another? What are the ends issues that we're dealing with? What are the owners saying? What are the accountable practices that we put to the chancellor? Monitoring reports should be significantly discussed by boards, and so many of them just pass it over. That is the significant work of the board, the consequential issues. That's where the bulk of your agenda should be. That should just dominate the whole of your agenda. From time to time, trustees want to know, you know, I'm really interested in how the CARES Act funding is being used. That's an incidental issue. That's an operational issue. The chancellor's receiving that money, it's going out to the campus presidents, it's being done that way. These are incidental issues, and can you have that information? Certainly. But what I would strongly recommend is this is at the end of the discussion. This is not the, what we need the board focused on, but sometimes that happens. Let me give you an example of how that maybe looks. This is what it looks like on our agenda. So the bulk of it is up here during, forgive number two, we're just in a video public act phase. We have to declare where trustees are located. But we get past the formality of it, and then we talk about any conflict of interest. And right off the bat, the job of the first job of the board, ownership linkage. And so we're connecting with the public. Oftentimes, we'll have a 5.2 and 5.3 where the, we're getting updates from the board about what the public meetings are saying, what's the survey evidence saying. Then we're into executive limitations, decisions by the board. Then I've got my monitoring reports that come forward. As you can see, I've got two executive limitations coming ahead at the November board meeting. And then the board monitoring its own performance. I mentioned previously about self-evaluation of the board. So they evaluate the efficacy of the monitoring report. And that is done in this particular case for a previous board policy on unity of control. Here is the information. This is the incidental information that is asked by the board. Information that they've requested. It's not necessary for policy governance, it's not necessarily for board work, largely a lot of the work of the president or chancellor. And then a summary of how policy governance and how the board is working, how we're talking to one another, how we're trusting one another, how we're getting the work done. That happens here. Oftentimes, on boards, there are other groups who are coming to us, and they don't recognize policy governance. I say they're less enlightened. And so in this particular case, you've got groups that say, well, I just need the board of trustees to approve this. We don't recognize the authority of the chancellor to do this. And so in that case, there are items that sometimes merit inclusion in a consent agenda, and policy governance does allow that to happen. Bylaws, another component of the functioning of a board. Sometimes board will take bylaws and they'll make them a policy. Bylaws are not a policy. I'd like you to think about bylaws as being the constitution, the constitution of your board. It's how you do your work. It's how you engage in the structure of your organization, what the board agenda looks like, what kind of rules of order will you use? If it is at Robert's Rules of Order, if it's Robert's Rules of Order for smaller groups. Many times, I've observed that bylaws just become just overburdened with all manner of job descriptions and all kinds of things. So I would encourage you to think about it as the framework, like the US Constitution, about how you are established, the authority by which you're established, the offices within the board, such as the board president and board vice chair or vice president, and all of those things are defined. You are legally accountable to these bylaws. And I would also encourage, very much like ends policies, that you review this on an annual basis. Something that I found as a helpful tool is when items are on the board agenda, is having just a cover sheet. This is really probably a suggestion to Chancellor Gonzalez is that, thinking about what am I asking the board to do? And how do I tie this into policy governance? So here you see that anything that is on the agenda for the board to consider has to be related to policy governance. If it's not related to one of those four quadrants in policy, it doesn't get on the agenda unless it's an incidental request. I give a little bit of clarity or definition to what this is about, why it's here, if there's a resource impact around the four categories of resource, and then the action that I'm requesting of the board as chancellor or president. We also use this page as a historical document. And so what you actually see is this is actually part of a historical record with the voting calculus of the board. So I've got a few more slides to cover on other points to consider, but let me pause to see if there are any questions around policy governance.
I'd be surprised if there aren't any, but with the board members, what are your questions? If you have any, speak up and it's okay.
I'm too far away to bite.
Yeah. I'm wondering if we want to just go down the list. Dr. Thor, any questions?
No, just to comment that we certainly have a lot of work to do. Because, you know, what we consider to be the monitor related to the student success metrics. And, you know, over the course of the calendar year, we get a lot of other monitoring reports that probably are not even read. And so we really need to spend some time going back and looking at our ends, looking at the chancellor limitations. The interpretation of the chancellor limitations have not been updated since Dr. Glassper left us. And again, as I said, the monitoring reports, their staff putting them together, and regrettably, I think they're probably not read, with the exception of the student success metrics, which we have a retreat or a work session to review. So at any rate, it's going to be a busy year, I suspect. Thank you, Dr. Phelan, for providing a lot of clarity around policy governance for us.
Yes, ma'am, happy to.
I'm going to, because I think this is very important. If you don't mind, Dr. Phelan, I'm going to go through the list of board members here. Ms. Smith, do you have any key comment or question at this point?
Thank you for the information. I think at this point, I'll just review the slides because I think there's a lot to digest. I don't have a particular pressing question at this time, and I think you've provided a great foundation for future professional development and engagement. So as one of the new members, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bitter Smith.
If we can rattle through the echo, let me just, again, I thank Dr. Phelan. I've had an opportunity to spend a great deal of time with Carver's theories as it relates to professional societies and trade associations, that's part of what I do for a living. And many of those theories, I think, are applicable to this board. I would respectfully say I think some of them may not be. And I know there's been conversation about the one Maricopa designation that has sort of clarified what the board's role is with the chancellor. I think that votes for the discussion, but I think it's a great setup for that conversation.
Dr. Narini. Dr. Narini, are you there?
Am I still unmuted? I'm, it looks like.
We can hear you now.
Okay. The question, and again, appreciate all the information and, yeah, go back and review it. But just when we're talking about owners and non-owners and shared governance, is what about when there's one person who is an owner and a non-owner? I mean, everybody's an owner because we're all paying taxes into the county, and everybody who lives in the county is owners. So does it depend on the questions that they have or the concerns that they have and which category we put them in?
Yes, let me address two points to that. Number one, the board needs to define who the owners are. So if you've already done that and the taxpayers are the owners, I'm going to go on that assumption. You were exactly right, Dr. Narini. The issue in this particular case is sometimes we wear many hats. I'm a stakeholder, I'm a customer, and I'm an owner. And so the board wants to focus its work on what are the questions as they relate to ownership, not operations. And so that distinctiveness is really what I was trying to convey.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Nguyen.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Phelan, for all of the information. I will look forward to receiving it when we get it from you and any of the additional information that you said you would provide. I think there's a couple of things. We have an interim chancellor who has had to be an interim chancellor during a pandemic, which has created its own unique issues. Also, separate from that, as a governing board, as you look at what we're having to deal with in the future, I like the idea of generative thinking, not one point of view, but actually working together to define what it is that we think are the priorities for the college. And looking at it from the interest of the taxpayer, but I think you said, and I'll be paraphrasing, something about the students and the student, what we're doing to serve our student population. We have declining enrollment, so how do we address the issues that the college is facing in a way with communication, with working, and with shared governance, supporting whoever's in the role of chancellor, and working as a governing board so that not just one point of view is shared and helping to create the future that we're trying to have, but also looking to honor the people that are representing their constituencies and making sure that we are empowering the person in that role, but also making sure that we are serving the people that we were elected by to serve. I hope that makes sense. So I'm going to try to take what I just said and then map it on to what you've given us. It's a lot of information. And so I think I'm going to probably need to have follow-up questions, but for now, that's what I've taken in. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just one question, that you really want to be clear about who owners are because owners may ability to the owners, the people who put them there, you define that. Sometimes constituents may be someone other than an owner. And again, you have to go to the question, what is the ownership question being asked?
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification also.
Mrs. McGrath.
Thank you. One of my big concerns is that when Ms. Bitter Smith speaks, I can't understand hardly any of it. She comes in and out, and I wish she could afford better equipment because I'd like to know what she said. And as far as the fact of constituents and owners, everyone in Maricopa County pays property taxes. If you rent, you're paying property taxes. And everyone else, you're paying property taxes. So there's no differentiation there. That's my only concern. I would like to know what Ms. Bitter Smith had to contribute. Could you paraphrase that for us?
Susan, can you start again? Can you try again?
And Jean, if you can't afford better equipment, I have equipment on the script. I will, with your permission, call you afterwards and repeat what I said.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I appreciate the comment from trustee McGrath. So remember, I talked about higher education being fungible right now. So if the college is not already doing this, you'll be offering a lot of programs online. And some of those individuals may be coming from outside of Maricopa County who are not paying property taxes. So if you think that all students are constituents, for example, now you've blended in those who are paying property taxes and those are not. So this is an example of variation and trying to provide some additional clarity.
Thank you. And Ms. Munoz, do you have a question or comment on policy governance?
I just first wanted to say thank you for the presentation. Like Mrs. Thor said, it was very enriching and it was a lot of information. And I know I'm not technically considered new, just because this is my second semester here on the board, but it did give me a lot of information that I think was very clarifying. So I did want to say thank you for the presentation, but I do not have any other questions.
Thank you. Dr. Phelan, you know, as you've laid out policy governance, I have to say, for my own learning, and I'm entering, what, my third year on the board, this is probably the most comprehensive introduction to policy governance that I've had. And it does, I would have to reiterate Dr. Thor's statement, which is, oh my, we have a lot of work to do. And, but I think what I appreciate the most is that it's very foundational to how this board can begin to work together, regardless of the fact that Dr. Gonzalez, at this point, is an interim chancellor, and we have a lot of other more specific work to do this year in relationship. in relationship to where we're going forward and all of that. So thank you for this as a foundation. But I, as board president, I'm also anticipating, oh my God, you know, there's a lot to do and perhaps we should reorganize some of the things and how we're approaching them. And we can't do it all at once, baby in the bath waters sort of moment. So I think there's a lot more for me to pursue in understanding these elements. We look forward to a presentation from our own office, internal staff around more detail of policy governance and our actual policies later in the month. But I hope we can call on you again for some support as we work through this. It may be the work that we choose to take on at a retreat, for example, as we begin to set the stage going forward. But we are a policy governance entity. And so I think this is a good step for us to have made, to learn, to grapple with, understand and appreciate the elements that policy governance has so we can do a better job. So I know you have other points you want us to consider, but concentrating on that policy governance piece is where I'm thinking.
Thank you. And I would just say you don't have to do this alone. I would be honored to help you, but there are a lot of other good people out there too. The important point is take your time, be deliberate, be thoughtful, and bring in some, get some help along the way. I've got about another 10 slides. I'm not going to get through all of them. So let me just highlight some key points. Best practices is take orientation of new trustees seriously. I would recommend that you make this a year-long process. Engage the use of mentors, for example. A trustee of longer standing may be mentoring another one. Regular check-ins before and after board meetings with new board members, orienting them to policy governance, to the philosophy, the desired culture. This is a content of materials that we use. We have this all digitally available to our trustees. And we also have evaluation of the orientation process. I'll skip through the meeting preparation just to focus on some key issues that I started with. And that is healthy relationships. This is the work that is of every member of the board and the chancellor working in collaboration. It's a covenant. We come together and professional development is a big part of that. So we're not inbred in information, but we continue to support each other. We engage in professional development. But as things happen, and because we're human beings, sometimes we're going to have some disagreements. The most critical, important component of that is that we handle this work respectfully when it is among the board and even when it is with the chancellor. This is the work of the board president to facilitate this information, to facilitate the dialogue, to facilitate a resolution. And sometimes, as all people want to do, they just want to be heard. And sometimes that can be done at a board meeting. Sometimes that can be deferred so that there's a follow-up. At the end, we are thoughtful men and women who are coming together, trying to do good work and try to sort out how that happens. Sometimes an intervention is required to be able to work through these issues as we try to define the future and then policy and goals for the organization overall. Sometimes we have dominant board members, as I alluded to earlier. I put a slide in here for your consideration related to that. And not surprisingly, you as trustees are going to want to know who the chancellor's working with. So the chancellor's cabinet, the college presidents, the chancellor's staff. Having the opportunity to at least be familiar with who these people are is an important role that the chancellor can provide in making sure that they are available, that we have that trusting relationship at that level between the board with the chancellor. And just as the board has the board president and the board working together, the chancellor has his cabinet to work together. And together, as the board and the chancellor and his team were able to achieve objectives of the board. In summary, there are lots of advantages of policy governance. I have concluded, based on the experience of having worked for different kinds of boards and served on different boards, I would never work for another organization that does not have policy governance. It is efficient, it's elegant, it's simple, it's clear. Everybody knows their swim lane. And I strongly encourage boards to, if you engage in this work, to be all in, lean into the work of policy governance and not treat it like a smorgasbord. Whether you continue with policy governance or other boards, I tell them if you have, if you have traditional, just decide what you want and have fidelity to it and have fidelity to the policies that you've established, have fidelity to the work. But the more that you fully embrace policy governance, I believe that you will see that you have more authority as a board of trustees, not less. You have increasing levels of trust and clarity about the work and the chancellor and his team and the employees of the college are clear about what their roles are. These are some things you might want to look at. I'll leave them to you as a checklist that if you are having difficulty with policy governance failing, these are the things that I've observed based on research that I've found. Where do things begin to go awry? These are some things that I've observed that you may want to keep a look for as like an early warning indicator that things aren't working so well. And then lastly, I can't emphasize enough about trust and David Horsager's work, committing to that work every day and it's hard work and you've got to do it just like a marriage. You've got to be all in. Otherwise, why are you doing this work? And that's how we began. What's your why to this work? And lean into that and commit and work on loving the people that you're with every day. These are human beings who have come together to bring their best to the table, to advance the institution. Let go of the ego, let go, you know, all the other stuff that comes along with it, the stature. Let that stuff go. Subordinate yourself, subordinate your individual views, subordinate political views. That has to be subordinated for the best interests of what you're there on behalf of the owners to achieve objectives, as you've codified in the ends. And do the homework. So many trustees come to work, they come to the board meeting without having prepared, without having researched and understood and know what's on the board agenda. So here's some of the work I've been doing, my new book is coming out, that represents a lot of this research. And let me pause at this time. My madam president, I know we're a couple of minutes over. My apologies, but I pause and will respond to any questions or happy to work with you in the future.
Thank you. We started a few minutes late, so that gives us the pass on that, Kellen. So board members, for the good of the order, do you have any last question or comment?
I have one. There were quite a few mentions there of follow-up questions and getting in touch with him and him providing services in the future. Would that be covered in his $2,000 fee or would that be extra?
Mrs. McGrath, I'm not clear on that, so we'll have to have that discussion. And then I can answer that question later.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions for Dr. Phelan? Being none, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have a comment? Certainly this has involved your interests as well.
President Sullivan, I just want to thank Dr. Phelan again for his experience and wisdom that he shared. Very enlightening to me, learned quite a bit about both of our roles. And I think I go back to the comments that you made and Dr. Thor made earlier about the fact that realizing we've got a lot of work to do. And I agree, whether we've got a permanent chancellor or an interim chancellor in place now, I think the board still has a responsibility to set foundational principles on how it continues to work with one another and work together in preparation for the day when we've got a permanent chancellor. So thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Dan, it's good to see you. Take care, be safe and be well.
And you too.
Dr. Phelan, we were at an advantage. We got to see you and you didn't see us. We were here and we were listening and it's apparent by the questions and comments that are made. We look forward to delving deeper into the presentation that you provided today, looking at the resources that are also on the PowerPoint. And as we keep moving forward, we'll rely a lot on the learnings we had today. I do appreciate, and board members, I want to say that, again, my onboarding was a little limited and my interest for this board and as we move together so that we have the opportunity to explore the experiences and the applications of our knowledge together as opposed to being isolated in how we might learn. So we have more learnings to do this year. I appreciate that you had the year-long framework for board orientation and board learning. I think we're tackling some of those things moving forward. I know board members, we have a meeting next Tuesday, which is another one of board development. And then after that, we have one the following week. So we're trying to learn a lot together quickly so that we can get the work of the board done and do it well and in alignment with our values and our mission. So I want to again extend my and our board's appreciation for your work with us today. And we look forward to staying in touch with you, Dr. Phelan. And thank you for the great job you're doing in your area of the world.
Yes, ma'am. And to you too. And thank you. Be safe and be well.
Yes, you too. So good night.
Good night.
Good night all.